Welcome everybody to Town Hall number seventy-three. It's November seventh, twenty twenty-three. And today, we're joined by Fly, Provo, Tavvo, Curtis, Guillermo, Ian, Judith, Malik, Slate, Tommy and Walter. What a crew, nice. Good to have you all here. There's Canichi, let me admit him. Cool. Welcome, welcome. Um, so yeah, today, um, the agenda starts off with a single mention, then we hop over to the workgroups update, uh, which we should aim to keep a little short, if possible, um. Yeah, should be fine, uh, because we've got two other topics, um, being, uh, voting experiment, which you may have heard about a little, and, uh, the Treasury Q4 proposal. If there's any room, uh, in the slot remaining after that, uh, there's, there's space for open topics. Then as per usual, a quick reminder on, uh, what the ambassador program even is for those joining, uh, for the first time or watching this on YouTube for the first time. Basically, what the ambassador program is, is a group of, um, self-organizing workgroups that all aim to work together to, uh, spreading the words and the mission and vision of the Singularity Net ecosystem. Um, there's a whole bunch of, uh, different ways you can help out. Couple of ways would be video or writers, there's a governance workgroup, there's treasury systems, there's archiving, there's research, there's a lot you can do. Uh, so if you're interested, please do hop on, uh, on our Discord server and find the Getting Started channel on there. That will help you get started. Um, then a quick call out for, um, this Thursday at nineteen UTC. Uh, there will be a deep, uh, deep funding focus group listening session. This is for, um, basically taking community feedback into how to improve deep funding and all its processes and procedures. And I think that's it on the mention side of things, unless anybody wants to call out an event happening this week that definitely needs more eyes on it. Feel free to speak up. Okay. Um, then we'll move to the workgroup updates. And top of the list is Incubation Think Tank, which takes place right after this Town Hall meeting. Fly, could you give us a little update on what you've been doing and what's coming up?
Yo, 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 guys. Yes, of course. Um. Last Think Tank, we had a great session. Um, we were discussing, um, and planning research projects, uh, looking about how we delegate research projects, uh, some examples, um, looking at how we structure tasks, uh, and projects between us. Um, we had some ideas of a few initiatives and we're discussing how we can coordinate between the members, uh, in the future with some different like, um, the different roles required. Uh, but yeah, it's great. You should tune in after this session.
Thank you very much. Um, next on the list is the archival workgroup. A quick check in the room. I don't think we have a representative right now.
By the way, Peter, I would be very much up for some kind of fun timer where you could like put on your screen or something so I see how long I've been talking. That would, that would be useful, giving these updates.
Fair, and could assist at, uh, helping it somewhat concise every now and then as well. Um, I honestly don't have that at the ready, uh, right now. There might be. I'll have a look in, uh, Zoom. Should be straightforward. Yeah, cool suggestion. Um, as for archival workgroup, um, last week, uh, their bi-weekly session did not take place, uh, so the next one will be not this week, um, but the week after that. At, uh, Wednesday thirteen UTC and the alternative, uh, slots, the other bi-weekly session there is the D Work PBL workgroup. Tavvo, may I ask you for a little update on what's going on?
Yeah, yeah. I think last time we mentioned basically that we finished up with the, like, a lot of lessons and like we have final lessons to do. And then like basically doing the action items. So tomorrow in the call, we basically play through the activities and and then what we come up with and for the lessons that we already have. And probably there are some new items that we do bring to each other. Okay. For example, course feedback is like, how do we provide feedback to the entire course? We made a lesson about that and that's the contribution. Let's see, and review that too. That's what's gonna come up tomorrow.
Thank you. And that brings us to a strategy workgroup once there's sixteen UTC.
I like the timer. It's cool.
Yeah, it's right, but I don't, I didn't want to put, like, oh, you can only talk for one minute. Um, yeah, sorry. We'll have to think about how to, how to do it, but it could be cool. Um, moving on. Oh, I do see Vanessa joining. Uh, we, welcome Vanessa. Uh, we just skipped on the archival workgroup, but if you want to provide an update, uh, you can. Also don't want to put you immediately on the spot, so we can do it in a bit, if you prefer. Um, let's give you a minute to think about that.
Where do you see Vanessa, actually?
Yeah, I think Vanessa's connecting now, you're right.
Okay. Ah, there she is. Yeah, now she's. I was thinking, ah, Peter's already hallucinating. We got them, guys.
Again, oh, man.
Always the same. All right, then, um, let's not mention birthdays, but let's move over to strategy workgroup.
Um, can you make the clock like Jeopardy? Tick, tock, tick, tock. So we, we can have an audible countdown. Um, strategy is, um, strangely enough, strategizing, and we've been strategizing for a couple of weeks on, uh, an organization, a body, a circle, uh, a mandala called, uh, the Round Table. Uh, there's a document in chat, uh, that has the, uh, bare bones of what we've been doing. It's been torn apart, edited, and it's out for the community, uh, to continue, um, please continue the editing on it. I don't know if you want to share it, Peter, or just let everybody read it on their own. Um, but you want it to be quick, so I don't want to really get into it. So it's there. Um, please go in, tear it apart and put your thoughts in. Um, you'll notice that the, uh, bones are at the bottom and the meat and potatoes are at the top. The bones is how we started it. So read the bottom first and then go back up to the top. Thank you.
Uh, thanks a lot. Um, if possible, uh, could you perhaps paste, uh, the link in, in chat? Also make sure to, uh, comment it on the, on the video once we're on YouTube.
Well, it should be in the link. I put it in at two fifteen PM, I believe.
I see it. Thanks. It's there. Cool. All right, um, then next on the list will be the Treasury Guilds. Tavvo, can I ask you for a little update?
Yeah, so, uh, last week when we met, we basically had, uh, um, like budget items and, and like topics around how do we proceed with limits and, uh, around rules, how do we allow to spend it? And, um, I think that was quite progressive. So I also dropped into the Zoom chat, the quarter for Treasury proposal, where it's like they've been down how much each groups will get limits and what they do. And in the end, there will be like general rules that we felt like, yep, that's good and easy to follow. And from now, would like to hear, yeah, more comments. It's like improvements, what could be added and if like this is good to go with. And we still have like some work to do. So the next time we meet there, you're gonna like rectify what information we keep from the another, like the previous quarter, like fund requests and all this auditing information and or maybe we can improve some. But overall, just to get kind of the feeling of, yep, our, is the, is the budget okay? And and we think towards the direction of, uh, trying to experiment with T Work, yeah. Budgets for workgroups and quills and experiments.
I see Ro wants to ask a question, I presume, or add to it?
No, I'm sorry. That was a mistake.
Well, you can, if you want to.
Oh, okay. I'll ask a question. How are you, Turo?
Yeah, busy day. I'm pretty good. We had to have a good call actually in a university about how do communities manage treasuries and, uh, what are the opportunities and is it, is it actually space to be living? And like, that's like even awesome for them that there are groups who get rewarded for doing research and like creating use cases where right now in university doesn't pay students to, to go through the codes and learn something. And connecting that with like grant funds and, yeah, just trying to re-experiment what I have learned in here and it's warm to see if we can scale it up in different environments and bring more people to to be the information on Treasury Guild. Thanks. Try to connect it to this topic.
Great stuff. I'm pretty sure that's not the last we'll hear about that. All right, um, moving on, that would be the onboarding group. Let's have a quick check. Is sugar in the room? I don't think so. That's not the button I wanted to press. Um, anybody present who wants to give a little update on onboarding?
Yeah, I could give a quick one. Um, we have been looking at how the onboarding group can help other workgroups with kind of what we're calling continuous onboarding. Once people are in, they still need support and they still need help. So what we're hoping to do and what we've been talking about and planning in the last meeting we had is to go and find out from other workgroups how they do it and see if we can put together some sort of a list of ideas for how you can keep getting people, new people engaged and making opportunities for them. So that's kind of where we're at. And this might also manifest itself in a survey to ask people how their onboarding experience was so that we can learn a bit about what works and what doesn't work. So keep your eyes open for that. And the next meeting is next Thursday at thirteen hundred UTC.
Sweet. Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, while we're at it, um, Vanessa, would you mind, uh, sharing a bit on, um, archival work?
Archives, yeah, just missed it. Sorry to be late. Um, yeah, we didn't have a meeting last week due to illness, so the next one is not tomorrow, but the next Wednesday. But we're getting pretty close to being able to actually, um, share an interface for the tool that we've been building to collect meeting summaries and post them directly both to Discord and to the Gitbook. It's all beautifully integrated and lovely. And at the moment, several workgroups are testing out our meeting summary templates. So we'll be feeding that information back in, um, to the design of, of the tool. So I know that there are some people here who are actually doing that and part of that. So thank you very much for your input. And, um, yeah, it's all progressing well, I think. So next meeting, if people want to come and join in and find out what we get up to, you'd be very welcome.
Thank you very much. And then for the last Thursday one being Incubation AI Sandbox. Fly, could you let us know what's up?
Yeah, um, there's one coming up this week. Um, we've been going through, uh, but, but let me start again. Um, Incubation Think Tank and Sandbox are looking at how there can be kind of integrated projects and, um, kind of collaboration between it. So, uh, we have, we are building out an idea, uh, with Curtis, um, like as a prototype project of how we can link the Think Tank and AI Sandbox for some, uh, outputs, um, which we hope are useful to the program and for the guilds. So yeah, come, come on Thursday. It'll be fun. We'll explore, um, explore some AI things.
Nice. Thank you. Um, then next on the list would be the Video Workgroup. Provo, please.
All right, um. There's a couple of things that, uh, have been happening. Uh, on top of my head, uh, we have the, the onboarding kind of collaboration where we did, uh, a video. Uh, that was concluded successfully from our part, but we do look forward for, for, for the feedback from the onboarding workgroup side. And, uh, I know that they have been also working on a certain document that would, uh, basically specify what to ask for exactly when it comes to video or any other sort of content creation. And so I look forward to have that document and perhaps even give it to other workgroups so that they have kind of a standard to work with. Uh, we do have other things. I mean, we have the casual, um, the usual kind of tasks or like, let's say, things that we output, uh, things like town hall, um. Uh, the, the town hall summaries, uh, those have been doing very well on Twitter. I see the views increasing every time, uh, which is usually a good sign. That means that at least some people are engaging with that, uh, with that content. Um. Uh, we did roll out, uh, a, a video about, uh, the, the conflict resolution document that has been created from strategy. Uh, we tried to input as much information, at least as, at least for an introductory kind of thing to the document, and then people can read the document after that. Um, uh, so that was cool. Uh, there is also, uh, I think, yeah, there was a short also being done about the supervisory council. Uh, this short, basically in sixty-second bit, uh, kind of explained what was the supervisory council and basically explained that there was, there was a vote that happened and these people got voted for in, for the supervisory council. Anyway, it was kind of a small bit video where you kind of get a small idea about what's happening on the supervisory council side. Uh, there is another video that, uh, is actively being worked on, uh, also by the video workgroup, uh, about the funding results. So we'd like to introduce the people, uh, or the teams that want, uh, and then talk about the process overall. How did it go? What happened? The, the kind of successes of this round of funding? Um, and all this kind of stuff. Uh, next week, we're looking forward to, to create, uh, uh, more videos for relevant topic. So far, we still haven't brainstormed about, let's say, next videos to be worked on. But at least we know we're gonna do the usual, you know, the town halls and the summaries and this kind of stuff. Uh, yeah, I will, we, we also had some little updates. So there was a suggestion to make a QA document for members of the video workgroup where we can put some questions that might pop up in, uh, for new members that join in. And they can just like check out the document and then like see whether this question was asked before or not, just to reduce a little bit the friction of, uh, new people that join the workgroup basically. Um, I will put in the link for, uh, the video workgroup's card, uh, page. And yeah, most of, not even most, like all of the relevant, uh, kind of documents and links are over there. Check it out. If you're interested in joining, we will open, I think there will be discussing this week about opening for, uh, you know, the doors for new members' application again. Uh, if that goes well, which means it, it's agreed upon, then yeah, welcome everyone, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Curious, uh, to see how long it will be open, if it's gonna open. Um, cool. Uh, that brings us to the Writers' Workgroup. Canichi, could you give us a short update?
Um, yeah, definitely. Uh, good day, everyone. So, um, the update for writers would be quite, uh, short today. Um, so on, uh, meeting, this last Friday, we covered, um, a lot of stuff actually, and, uh, which includes the, uh, recently concluded, uh, trivia that we had also on Friday, actually, which was our first session and just a really fun session, which a lot of people enjoyed. And we'll be doing that every Friday same time, which is, uh, seventeen UTC. So we're looking forward to more people joining in on Friday. Uh, there's a trivia channel on our Discord, so you can check that out. So also, we concluded that, uh, we're making a lot of articles this, um, month. Yeah, to fill up for the since this month, because they were fast and busy and all. Um, also we, uh, yes, uh, we covered on things that might be needed for Zilly, uh, kind of like, uh, strategy to get more, more views and more people checking out our content and engaging, uh, or wider engagement actually. And, uh, yeah, we settled on getting more infographics to explain the participation rules, uh, so now we're closer our first focus. So once, uh, more people are, yeah, tweeted and understand that, we'll be launching the Zilly sometime, uh, at the middle of this month. And, uh, yes, we also, yeah, we also idealized for a fact that our scrivlers, uh, attend other meetings happening in the ecosystem here that do any of our meeting and, uh, it's that that, uh, we can collaborate, if we have, actually, that can make the hand in my notes, right? So this is about our sub and also give more community members context of everything happening within the ambassador program each month. And also, you know, to foster the collaborative spirit where we're moving forward with, uh, we're having a question now so that we, we actively don't need everybody attending all the meetings, just, uh, getting all the notes that we need and, uh, you know, compiling that and bringing it to the writers' channel so everyone can go through it and, uh, offer their suggestions and now to move forward. Yeah, so. Yep, I think that's it. We already are into the month, just seven days into the month. Uh, we have four articles on our medium, uh, from November and, uh, the access to the good notes, to get more views for readers. So, uh, we will do that. Um, moving forward to, um, we have a few, three, um, reports are done. So I'm still trying to coordinate everything for this, uh, quarter, this particular, this Q4 quarter. So now we can, uh, see if we are having more scrivlers, uh, we have, uh, in, uh, increase in our, uh, asking flow and everything. Thanks.
Thank you. And a short note, um, apparently based on chat, uh, apparently the medium page is somewhat difficult to find. So, um, I think there's some, uh, work to be done there.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah.
Sorry, I think it's on the, it's on the Ambassador Guards page, right? I think.
It should be.
I didn't even know we have a fucking magic. That's good to know.
It will be on the cards shortly.
Our notes, uh, I think, I think we have a lot of scattered kind of, uh, pages and stuff like that. Maybe like, I don't know, consolidating some of these might make sense. Uh, like a kind of a, just a couple where people can search.
I think we're getting, uh, quite close to the point where we needed a guard page for all the guard pages we have. But that's a good.
We're right to, we're right to deep funding round for proposal. Please sponsor website for the puzzle program. We need some, some real resources, yeah. Yeah, exactly. We need to find. Yeah, we can do like a research project, finding all the documents we will ever create.
I mean, I think we're going through the process right now, uh, but it's also kinda, I didn't realize it was quite this diverse, uh, not very supportive of new, of recent arrivals, to be honest.
Yeah, fair. Um. Well, getting the medium on the main card, that, that should help a little. Um, also, uh, we can link that card on the, uh, Singularity Net's, um, website on the ambassador section.
What is the main card, by the way? Which one is the main card?
Impulsive thing.
Because I see so far in the chat, two cards. One of them is from video and the other one is for the voting.
We have a whole new family of bounty's coming up. Find the puzzle program. Find the links. Help us. We're lost in the wrong space.
Nice. Uh, right, uh, looking at the clock, I, I do want to keep the tempo up a little bit, but I also missed out on, um, one of the sessions we're having on Fridays. And that would be the marketing guild itself. That's not on the, uh, on the slide. And sorry to put you on the spot, Judith, but can I ask you for a little update on there?
Sure. Uh, yeah, Friday, we had our second collaborative session to discuss how we can approve, uh, improve cross-collaboration between the SNET ambassadors and the SNET, uh, spin-off projects. We discussed a few things, um. One of them was, um, should we keep an outreach and marketing guild, uh, should we keep that running or should we just have on the people with an outreach role, so to say, that are gonna coordinate between the writers' workgroup and the video workgroup as well as the spin-off project? Um, we already discussed that last week and still haven't made a full decision on that. So, um, we discussed what responsibilities specifically this outreach role holders, um, should have. We discussed if we should increase our efforts on Twitter and amplify even more messages from all the spin-off projects, or if that's gonna be too much and too messy and if people are just gonna mute the channel if we're tweeting too much. Um, we had a discussion on how we can best offer our services to the other spin-off projects. And we came up with a whole list of services that we can already offer to spin-off projects. Um, that being said, it was an ideation and brainstorm session. So we didn't actually make a whole lot of decisions on Friday, but we did decide to create a document where we can further put all of our ideas together so that we can soon come to make decisions on that. And I'll share the document in the chat. So if you would like to collaborate or add your ideas on, um, yeah, how we can best support the spin-off projects or what kind of services we could offer um, from all of the workgroups, then please feel free to add it here. I just shared it in the chat.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And then moving on, we get to the gamers' guilds. I'm not sure if I should give Slade or Malik the word, but it doesn't.
Yeah, um, I'll go. Uh, thank you. Uh, hello, everyone. Um, the gamers' guild session actually didn't happen last week. Um, but it's going to be happening this week, so I'm just going to be pre-announcing what's going to be happening in the session. Um, we have decided to actually, uh, distribute the session into three parts. Um, the first session, uh, the first part is going to be the game session, uh, which usually takes place every time. So, uh, the two, uh, parts have been added as an extra. Uh, the second part is going to be the informational session in which we are going to be actually exploring the Central and AI Warfare twenty twenty-three, uh, area in which, uh, Dr. Van Gudsel and, uh, Twin Protocol and Sophia verse, uh, we are going to be exploring their sites and, uh, of course, the prototype of Twin Protocol as well. And, uh, yeah, the third part of the session is going to be covering the And, uh, yeah, the third part of the session is going to be covering the demonstration phase of the next game, which is, uh, which is going to be from the web as we are shifting towards this. So we have decided to actually go to the demonstration phase and take feedback from the participants as well. And for the coming week, uh, we are actually also going to be focusing on the assessment document, uh, which is going to be analyzing the proposed, uh, proposed objective, which, uh, which were given in the proposal for the gamers' guild and, uh, what have been achieved so far. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. And then, uh, moving over to the Monday, um, starting off with the knowledge base work group. Taffo, what's going on there?
Yeah, um, in the knowledge base, I just say most previously, um, right now, the, we didn't have the call, so we're still doing the asynchronous like linking, just like we talked before. Get all the documents and stuff we do on the same page, understand what is for internal use, what is for external use. Can we organize them in a way that we can find them? So that linking is happening, uh, right now. And next week, we will actually look into some analyzed items too. So this is another action item we allowed ourselves to dive in asynchronously to take some items, ask three questions. What is this resource about? Is there a newer version or should this be an item in Gitbook? And based on your assumption, we're gonna go through them and get this, all the, all the assets we have audited faster and then look bunch of them and organize them in the, uh, these higher quads. And that will be happen next week, Monday.
Nice. Thank you very much. Um, then on to the developer work group. Um, not entirely sure if I should give Rova or Guillermo a turn here, um, but I should wait.
I already talked Guillermo, Waka, anyone who's in this session is very welcome. If you want to, otherwise I can go for it as well.
Hello, everyone. So good, Rojo. I have here the document. So, uh, to resume, we have our second, uh, call this Monday. Uh, the first one, we're it was Rojo and me, and, uh, this time we were, um, followed by Waka, uh, Kenichi and other potential members. Um, so, um, Rojo Initiative starts a proposal, uh, structured document where, which we have been working online. Uh, the introduction, strategy, evaluation process, uh, resources, team, um, measure and metrics, uh, services, uh, expected. Outcomes, um, and long-term strategy for the developers group. Uh, also, we start, uh, trying to setting up expectations and understanding how we can, uh, the team potential skills and profiles. Uh, so it was a very constructive, uh, second meeting. And next time, I guess we'll have, uh, more and better information to share.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to, uh, that will unfold. And then, yes, Kenichi, feel free to. If you raise your hand to ask a question, uh, feel free to. If you just want to wave.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, okay. Sorry, can you?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. So, uh, I don't know if you're, uh, sending the message in chat. But yeah, I actually, I don't know, I forgot that. I missed the biggest highlight of, uh, last week's, uh, meeting. So, uh, I don't know about you guys, but, uh, we collaboratively actually just decided to organize in the present trip. Yes, but anybody in the work group felt a great idea and the ambassadors should sit down and, uh, figure out, uh, does it happen? So, yeah, I like maybe even get deep on the deal, like, so basically it's a bit like an idea to like, uh, pick our top, uh, contributors or top, uh, what they know wanting to be to meet at the end of, uh, the, 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 the. Or something, and, uh, yeah. It happens to, it should be, be, that's what I was saying. I guess I liked it last week.
Yeah, audio got quite choppy there at the end, uh, honestly. Uh, but from what I understood, you're gonna propose to deep funding for a real-life meetup. I'm, I'm curious how that will unfold and how the rules of deep funding, uh, think about that, honestly, uh, but who knows?
By the way, one thing we will have to wrap our heads a little bit together. What will be official proposals from a boss's program? And which should rather be not official proposals and more individual proposals. We couldn't, we tend to want to put the all ambassadors branding there on proposals like, oh, this, but this will be a fantastic question. I see it coming, guys.
Yeah, fair. It's, uh, yeah, that, that will be, will need to be discussed for sure. All right, uh, then, uh, last but not least on the list.
Actually, some organizations, cause, because of the heavy cross-participation between the ambassador program, uh, people in the foundation, people that are active in deep funding, tender organization to organization can be a little tricky. But what I've seen people do is do a dedicated unit within ambassadors that would then specifically run the proposals within deep funding. So there is clear delineation of, uh, decisions and funding. Just, you know, cause some people are super concerned about corruption.
Yeah, fair, fair. Uh, all right, uh, then on to education work group. Um, head off.
Hey, everybody. The difference between ignorance and stupidity is education. It's knowledge versus not knowing, doesn't mean you're dumb. Um. Education has been working on a, for multi-weeks now, a, um, video self-education series for ambassadors. Um, we're, we've been using AI in video and doing some good homework, working on, uh, the structure, the bone of what a segment should look like. So we can then turn it over to the writers' work group and the video work group and let them do the individual, it's, it's like fifteen, sixteen segments. Um, this week, uh, we hit a bump in the road again, and, uh, the question was raised, as has been, uh, every week is, should we be focusing on educating ambassadors to a higher level? Or should we, uh, spend our resources on, uh, educating John Q public? Um, so this is the multiple time, uh, we've hit it. And, uh, I don't have an answer for it. The group seems to wanna go in a certain way. So, um, tune in next Monday and, uh, we're gonna tackle that issue is which way do we go? I would like to bring up, um, a, another topic. I forgot to do this in strategy. I was overwhelmed by, uh, someone's having a birthday today and it, it caught my attention. But Strategy Guild started and it ends tonight. So if you wanna get in on it, uh, the first prize is fifty dollars in bragging rights. Twenty-five dollars is an atta boy, atta girl or atta AGI. And third prize is ten bucks, uh, plus a totally worthless NFT that I did once. Um, and it is for renaming, um, or naming, uh, seed sync come down. Uh, when Jan, uh, Hurling was, uh, uh, discussing things in a deep funding town hall months ago, he said something about maybe we need to come up with a better name. Uh, so, so far, and, and maybe Felix, uh, could use his voting, uh, capabilities on this, is voting for, uh, the winner. And I'm just going to.
Voting sucks.
Voting does suck. I agree.
Yeah, it's.
I, I, I fully agree with you. I think it sounds like a convo we've had before. Um, but I just put in, uh, the chat, the names, uh, that have been submitted so far. Uh, we have Singworld Dao, SComDAO, DA Oversight dot AI, uh, uh, The, uh, Atheron, NER, Singlon, Conscient and Sentius. And, and those are the submissions, uh, to date. Uh, there are official rules, um, Felix, and if you wanna name it SwingComDAO, it's fully gamed. Um, but you have to submit it in the right, either the, um, to the D-work task or to Strategy Guild channel. Those are part of the official rules and you have till midnight tonight. Um, so I, I thank you. And by the way, it's non-binding. It's no one's saying they're actually going to, uh, change the name, but I thought it would be fun to involve the community, uh, in name, naming seed sync down, which is really a mouthful.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to see what pops out of that one. Uh, cool, then, um, yes, Walter, if it's short, I bet.
Uh, so my interest specifically lies in, in outreach and collaboration with the, uh, researchers and developers and external open source and AI communities and, you know, crypto web three kind of stuff. Cause this is what I'm personally, I'm familiar with and skilled at. So that effort kinda cuts, uh, horizontal to the vertical orientation of the groups. So I'm kinda like, so, so there is, Tommy, the reason I've been pushing for a particular slant to the videos is cause I wanna leverage that and that specific outreach to that audience. Likewise, I wanna do tokenomics on each of the tokens that are, uh, that have been rolled, uh, assess the state of, uh, you know, GitHub and kind of software maturity for the ones who are on open source, uh, kinda pathway. So, so this is where I'm coming across, asking for specific kind of capacities within each or within the number of, uh, workgroups and guilds. It's to pursue that. Uh, I think it's both necessary and could be fruitful. Some kinda just letting you folks know what, uh, shapes my, uh, my interests.
Thank you for that. Um, yeah, we'll have to see how that can fit in. I mean, should definitely be possible to fit in.
Yeah, thank you, Walter. Is that a role that you would be interested in, in taking over? Or is that just something you would like to see from the marketing and outreach guild?
Well, so indeed, uh, the overarching mandate would be outreach, but specifically fitting those, the expectations of those environments and facilitate collaborations. It's not just us talking to them. Uh, so, yeah, to me, it's part and parcel outreach. And well, within the charter of the ambassador program, and I'd like to kinda be active in that, uh, outreach. So then others, you know, the way we present the, all of our surface of all the venues for content discovery, the videos we generate, you know, I'm gonna attempt to shape what, what other people do to also become, you know, for the artifacts to also be usable directly for, for that effort. But, yeah, I think it's gonna, you know, footfit very well under the outreach umbrella, which I think is a guild to me, because it's gonna, it has to be a persistent activity to me. It should like, I've been advocating that that umbrella should probably house sixty to seventy percent of the overall budget, or now it maybe is closer to fifty.
It would be really, uh, helpful if you could add some of your thoughts to that document that I shared. Um, I believe you mentioned that the meeting for you is very early, so you cannot take part. So it would be, yeah, I guess the best thing would be.
I don't genuinely have to. I could attempt to participate offline, but you guys are in a creative mood, so, you know, demanding that you capture everything just for my benefit. Anyway, just keep that request in mind if you can accommodate that.
I will make sure to add it to the document and we'll have a discussion on it.
Would should they add the section, uh, start the document that refers to yours? Cause you have a singular vision within that of, you know, that one.
Walter, can you take this async? We really need to just.
Sure, sure.
Hold this quote, send it away, you can't do that to each other.
Right. Okay, will do. Uh, but for, for the entire organization, are we together on shifting from current fifty to internal and external towards more like seventy thirty towards external?
I think that's a too simplistic, uh, representation, to be honest.
Well, you know, it's like, uh, what's that? All of the money is, uh.
We will get to, um, sorry, fly?
Cause to me, it's not about money. It's about the commitment of the organization.
Yeah, fair. We, we do get to the, um, sorry, fly, go for it.
I was just gonna say, maybe best to just put the question in the Discord channel and we can answer it there.
Yeah, we are quite short on time, um, for this, uh, session at least. Uh, cause there's two topics actually, um, which, uh, I do want to touch on and looking at the clock. We will run over, uh, and I'll definitely try to not, uh, run over into the, um, incubation session. But, um, yeah, starting off with, um, devoting experiment, um, Felix, can I ask you for, well, a little nice intro into the concept, cause we're live.
Yeah, we really have a hard stop, have to jump in one minute. Uh, voting is live, uh, the voting ballot is on chain. So anybody who engaged for more than, uh, five hours in the last six months has not interacted via, via our contribution system is eligible to vote. You should have received a voting token last Tuesday, all the days. Which is the SNET test token called. You can find further informations when you go on the ballot. There's a link to, uh, SNET test vote one page as well, which we put together on, on card where you can find voting specifics and parameters and all the stuff. We have fifty-one eligible voters. It's a test vote, don't voting on any serious topics, simply bootstrapping a one person, one vote, which is, that's already actually quite good, to be honest. And we had a really nice call today in governance, uh, work group, as why we said ideally, cool. Maybe we would generate some sort of playbook out of this. And to say, could, how can we pilot some interesting on-chain decision-making processes? generate playbooks, look what works, what doesn't work, and then, yeah, generate some interesting knowledge and give it to us that they can experiment with, stuff them, so. Awesome. That's it. Have a beautiful day, everyone. Have the job.
Thanks for that. If, uh, we're aware of your very hard stop, I should have, like, I should have, um, kept the time better. Apologies for that.
Yeah, maybe it would be good, uh, kind of section of the, the, the meeting a little bit. In that way.
And, and add a timer, and add a timer to Walter. Walter, we have a timer for you to hit. Don't hijack the shit, man.
Yeah, but he's on California time and those people are different.
Why? Well, you have to understand, I'm quite good at putting my stuff down.
We're not gonna fully discuss how you are able to take over the call. That's not where we're going. Sorry for that.
No, no, but listen, on a serious note now, if this isn't.
Um, apologies, I muted you. We will not, um, nothing personal, but we're heading, uh, the limit of the time slot and there's still a topic to cover. but we're heading at the limit of the time slot and there's still a topic to cover. So, yeah, I will unmute, but um, yeah. Uh, Taffo, if possible, could we touch on the topic of uh Q4 budget, please?
Yeah, I think the quickest way to cover is this, uh, the document I shared and soon I can share it again, of course, although I closed it, the proposal. And going through that line by line, understanding what things people are doing. If you feel like there is good things to improve, simply add a comment, we can improve that document because this is a proposal for us to have like clarity on the direction and the experiment. So that when the quarter ends, we have something to compare it with the actual results and talk about how it went, what were the activities and did and how much we got done, how much we couldn't get done. And yeah, that's basically why this proposal is for, to kind of have a bit of alignment on our spendings.
Yeah, it's um, yeah, looking at the dates, you know, it's seventh of November, so let me uh be very clear that for next um uh next quarterly budget, that, that's, that's a hard lesson learned there or a strong lesson learned, rather. Um, you shouldn't start the evaluation of a quarterly budget at the end of the quarter. That's um. Yeah, just creates a whole lot of um drag on there. Um, quickly check for treasury, there's not a session this week. No, it will be next week. Then so hopefully by the time that's um.
Are they now bi-weekly?
Treasury is bi-weekly. Yeah. It was for a little bit. It was weekly and maybe it's a bit short term probably to arrange that for this week, but maybe we should keep it this week or should have it this week. Thoughts on that, Taffo?
I think I have some plans on this week. But I mean, but of course, if the people can come together and dis- discuss and improve this. Um, but yeah, I will feel like we're pretty close, like actually, I mean, I think we're actually overly close of understanding what are the limits and budgets? And if there is nobody objecting and coming, hey, I think this should be increased or this should be decreased. This is the numbers we're gonna go with and gonna have a nice Christmas and uh prepare for a new year. And then by yeah, next year, we, we, there will be new updates based on what are we going to discuss over the weeks. But there isn't like huge deadline or something we need to run to. But of course, I understand the more discussions we have, the more clear it gets while we are doing.
Um, I see Walter asking in uh chat what the steps are to move it through the um organization. Uh, so like, um, when it gets approved or uh ratified and uh deployed or implemented. Um, I would say for now, um, a comment until, yeah, we haven't put a strict deadline on that.
Well, on the same budget proposal, if you open it, I'm on the bottom, there are general rules. And there are some outlines we put there, like uh the ambassadors and workgroup, which can create and propose treasury proposals. So we did it. This is what, what just happened. We proposed a proposal and now we, we must kind of agree that it aligns with the missions and goals of what we are doing in like it makes sense. And then we review it for fourteen days or until in eighty percent of all ambassadors and workgroups agree. How do we do that? We haven't, we, we don't know. We, we will discuss this on Discord and maybe have a Discord reactions. And then we also wanted to have like a community vote. Um, right now, a community is hard to define, so we thought we use town halls to capture people's attention. But right now it's like kind of showing it. So uh next week, that's the, we, we are more clearer on what to do and then we also have a meeting coming up next week.
Um, so would you want a, a slot uh during next week's town hall as well to discuss?
That's a good point. I think yes.
Okay. Um, makes me wonder if we should revert like the workgroup updates and the, the other topics to start off with the other topics first perhaps. Uh, but that's.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's also more interesting uh for outside viewers, if, if there's news or updates and they can just watch at the start of the video rather than getting lost.
Well, there's timestamps, but yeah, I, I, I agree. Yeah. All right, um. Yeah, that pretty much uh sums it up. And looking at the clock, I think we should more or less wrap it up. Um, quick check, um, in the room, if there's anything that needs to be added to the governance session. Do speak up. All right. Cool. Then that's a wrap. Uh, thanks, everybody, for attending and sharing and yeah, we'll see each other in uh one of the many meetings upcoming. Have a good one.